Thank you. Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
What is the pleasure of the commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Your call.
Commissioner Uliwari?
Yes.
Commissioner Romelo?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Casey, a second by Commissioner Romelo. Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of March 21st.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I move approval of the minutes for March 21st, 2018 meeting, and I did send in minor corrections already.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Your call.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Romelo?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Uliwari?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Casey, a second by Commissioner Romelo. Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is public input. We do not have anybody signed up for public input at this time. Next item on the agenda is the presentation by our Housing Authority Financial Court, Commissioner Specialist Natasha Padiya.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. In front of you, you have the Revenue and Expenditure Comparison Report through March 31st, 2018. Seventy-five percent of our year has elapsed. As you see, our revenues are not where they should be, but in our ELOCs account, all of our operating subsidy is in there. We did receive, so you'll see a little bit of an increase on operating subsidy last month. They did release about $56,000, so that increased. And just this last week, they also released another $57,000, as well as the capital funds that were spent. So we are getting money in, which is a good sign. Hopefully, we'll be able to operate through the end of the year, and they'll be continuously giving us the money that's in our LOCs report. Again, with our expenditures, we are keeping them low, just because we want to make sure that our cash balance is able to sustain our expenditures until we receive additional cash into our bank account.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Uliwari?
On the expenditures, you're holding, you're saying that you're, is that the houses that need painting, or doors?
Absolutely not, Commissioner. Sorry, Commissioner. You'll agree. As work orders come in, we turn them around if there is, if you look at the list, I think, on your Commissioners' report, the report that's provided by Mrs. Padiya, you'll see that our work orders are down. So if, as long as the tenants are calling us with this, with the issues, and they are letting us know that this is needed, they are being provided this, whether it be paint or a doorknob that needs to be fixed, a lock, they are being serviced.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The next item on the agenda is the Housing Director's Monthly Report. Reporting on unit maintenance, maintenance have been working on unit turnarounds, unit work orders, property upkeep, including trash picking, putting of weeds, housing management, housing manager, waiting list manager continues to work on qualifying and screening applicants, getting them prepared for move-ins. Housing managers continue their day-to-day operations, including lease renewal, interim adjustments, recertifications, annual inspections, lease enforcement. Now, with the smoke-free deadline of May 31st quickly approaching, we have been preparing the tenants, as well as applicants, by informing them of this requirement. Applications have been updated to inform anyone interested in applying for housing that we are a smoke-free housing property. Tenants are reminded at move-in through monthly newsletters, annual recertifications, and interim adjustments of this requirement, as well as signing the recently approved smoke-free policy that was passed by the Commission. Training, the housing staff continue to attend monthly training provided by the Housing, I'm sorry, by the City Risk Management. We have two maintenance staff that will be attending hands-on in electrical plumbing and maintenance in Albuquerque on April 23rd through the 27th. And we have two maintenance staff and three administrative staff that will be attending the annual New Mexico Naro Conference held in Rio Negro on May 8th through 11th. Projects, we have the abatement process that has already started on four buildings, eight units, and that was part of the 2016 capital fund project money. This was part of the obligation for the 2016 capital fund. For compliance monitoring notification, on April 11th, we did receive Commission's approval to obligate the 2016 RHF replacement housing factor funds. That was part of the obligation with our response to finding number 15. The Housing Authority has continued with the necessary procurement activities, and contracts are in place, contracts are in place, and meeting that, which are meeting the obligation deadline. We did have a resident advisory board meeting this afternoon at 3:00, and we'll report further on that. I also have included on your workstations there pictures of units. I did put before and after pictures. There are two units, though, that I did include. The first pictures are the move-out picture, or how the unit is left when somebody moves out. The second picture, right behind that, are what the unit looks like when somebody moves into it, or how a unit is made available to somebody before they move in. Any questions?
Good job. Very good job.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Casey.
Thank you. What do you do with all the stuff that's left there, like furniture and?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it is disposed of.
At the dump?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's something that's usable, you don't?
No, we're not allowed to.
Okay. And the people that leave it that way, I mean, it looks like they just walked out the door and didn't look back.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, in some cases, that does happen, where they just, they just up and leave. In some cases, we try and make as much contact and as much effort with them to remove their belongings, because that does save for maintenance having to do it also. And it also saves on the charges, because they are charged for disposal.
Yeah. Because, you know, I'm looking at the first page, there's a hospital back there. Those are very expensive, and I'm always shocked when people just leave things like that. All clothes and stuff, I can understand, but something that isn't normally, something that you would buy?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this one was actually a special unit. We actually had to have a hazmat team come in and abate this unit because of the hazardous material that was left inside this unit. So absolutely none of this actually went to the transfer station, it actually went to a separate area for disposal.
And they are charged, do people actually pay? I mean, if they're gone and you don't know where they've gone?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, in many cases, we do have tenants that, or previous tenants that do leave a balance. Once again, their information all goes into the database, where they're not allowed to qualify for any housing anywhere until that balance is paid off. We do have a lot of people that do pay it, even if they make payments over time, because they do want to have a chance to, to have subsidized housing again. But there are cases, of course, that we do not collect, and we have to go for collections.
How much money do you estimate you lose every year from, you know, fees that weren't collected yet?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I believe the last write-off we did was, I think it was $12,000 per the year. I think the year before that, it was about $4,000. And I think the higher amount of the $12,000 was because we did have a, an abatement that needed to be done at a unit, which cost the Housing Authority $3,000?
$15,000, but we didn't charge it before.
So it was a pretty substantial amount.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Can you tell me the status of the resident that had his, I guess, his apartment burned up, or there was a fire in his?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that tenant, that is not a current tenant any longer, because we had mentioned that it was under investigation. That is still in the process, and we're still going with the, but he isn't, that person is no longer resident.
Okay. Is that the same person that his father always complained about how his son is being treated?
No.
No? Okay. Can you tell me the status of that situation? Because I know that they asked me to ask the Housing Authority about that.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we are in contact with the individual you're speaking of, and as far as I know, there are no issues right now. We do deal with any issues he brings to us right away.
Okay.
So I don't believe there are any complaints, if there are, if you can ask him to let us know, because we, he's been in pretty good contact with us, and we haven't had any problems or situations.
Good. Yeah, he has given compliments about you two, so, both of you.
Thank you.
Just want to let you know, I just wanted to make sure you knew. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, continue.
Next item is Commissioner's report.
Commissioner Dave.
Yes, I have a Commissioner's report.
Okay.
Okay. Today, April 18th, 2018, I attended the Las Vegas Housing Authority Record and Advisory Board meeting. At this meeting, the financial specialist, Natasha Padiya, presented the changes to the Mission and Continuous Occupancy Plan, better known as ACO, as well as the 2018 Annual Plan. Twelve attendants participated, including myself. Ms. Padiya spoke about the no-smoking policy and the crime-free policy changes to the ACO, as well as this year's annual plan, which included the mission statement of the Housing Authority, which is, "The City of Las Vegas Housing Authority provides safe and adequate affordable housing to low-income families in environments that fosters and cultures for preservation, self-efficiency, and community pride." We had an open discussion about different issues in all sites and areas. The two main conversation topics were assigned parking, which was a controversial topic that the group was split on. Ms. Padiya stated that she would work with maintenance and office staff to try and resolve this issue. But a lot of it comes down to being courteous, being courteous neighbors to one another. We all agree that every area may need to be looked at differently. The second was security lightening and cameras, in which the policy in place to protect and lease-upholding tenants as a group, we felt additional lighting and exterior security cameras would be a deterrent for legal activities to happen in our areas. This would also aid law enforcement in our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Dave.
Okay, I just want to let all employees, that I've been with you for eight years, and I'm not leaving, because I'll still be, and my son will be, and I think he'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casey.
I just wanted to ask a question based on what Commissioner Davis has reported, stating that the discussion was that more lighting and security cameras are needed. Do you have, I mean, you already have some now, but they're not enough, or they're not in the right places, or?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I'll let Natasha, she was the host of this meeting.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the major problem that our tenants are having is illegal dumping. We have people driving into the properties, and they're putting sofas and mattresses into our trash receptacles, and then our tenants are going to dump their household trash, and they're not able to, because it's overflowing. So what they want, because, you know, to catch these people, by the time they call law enforcement, they're gone. So they thought, well, if we have cameras around the trash cans, then it might help them. And at night, we do have lighting around, like, the walk areas and, and different areas there, but they were thinking, like, additional lighting around the trash, because that's when it's happening, because it's happening at night, that's when they're going and dumping into our trash receptacles. So they're thinking maybe the lighting around the trash areas at night might help. So we do have lighting around. We do not have security cameras as of yet, but we do have the lighting. We'd have to work with IT and kind of figure out how we were, would be able to put cameras, because our sites are scattered throughout the city of Las Vegas. But that is something that will be added, well, we've actually already had it in our five-year plan, but we might move it up to this year's capital fund budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious about the comments that Ms. Griege made on the, on the audit report in, in regards to the status of our Housing Authority. Can you give us an update on that?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have not received as of yet the report. I believe we are waiting on that.
Okay, so we haven't had any discussions with Ms. Griege?
When she was at our office on April the, what was it? That was the only time that I've had contact with her regarding that.
I'm sorry?
When she was in our office on those two days?
Yes.
Two days? That was the only time we had some discussion about it, but there was no decisions or anything that I'm aware of. That's all, the only thing I've discussed with her was regarding the compliance review since then.
Okay. Do you have any sense of when we'll receive her response or her?
I don't, but I can ask her, I can see if she can let us know.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam?
Commissioner Uliwari?
How about fencing around the areas?
Madam Chair, Commissioners?
Have you thought about it, or?
We have, we, we do have some tenants who would like fencing. We did at one time have fencing, I remember when I started several years ago, we did have a lot of fencing. The problem with fencing is that the upkeep of the fencing, and if there's some one little thing wrong with a part of the fence, our entire site is gigged, and we lose points on our react inspection. Therefore, it's not cost-effective, it's not, there's a lot of reasons why we can't have fencing. Now, we can have perimeter, some, in some cases, we do have perimeter fencing around an entire area, but not where they have their individual fencing.
Because, I've been around the, you know, the tenants are in there. There's a lot of, those little roads that go back and forth, and, you know, the people are, they're just driving to the back, the back end of the, of properties and?
Are you talking about, like, the Apache Navajo area?
Yeah, like, like, the Navajo, you know?
That, it's not a road.
Yeah.
That area back there is actually not belong, does not belong to the Housing Authority. But I know that we do have tenants who are using it, because they feel it's easier.
They do, they do.
But we do have parking for them in the front, however, they sometimes choose to, I don't know if we'd have to talk to the city about possibly barricading or doing something so that they're not allowed to drive back there, because that does not belong to the Housing Authority.
Well, you know, the fencing that you have, was it a chain link, or like that?
In most cases, it was chain link fencing.
Have you thought about heavier fencing, you know, something that can keep that area from people going in and out to the back end?
That's something to think about, and something that, such as the resident advisory board meeting that we had today, is something that we ask the tenants for their concerns. That's, that's their time to come and tell us what they want to see in their areas. Fencing really was not an issue. They're more concerned about security, and they're more concerned about parking areas, sidewalks, things like that. We could look into or see about fencing, but, I mean, we can only do as much as we can do.
We, Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have priced, like, the wrought iron fencing for some of our smaller sites, because we have done it on the Church and Delgado site, like, just for the small site there on Hot Springs, just for that area to be enclosed. I think the independent cost estimate for all of the parts, even if our maintenance was to do it, I think it was going to cost us at least about $12,000, and that's just for the actual raw material. And then if a contractor was to do it, I don't know what their markup would be on that, but that's kind of where we're at there. So we've also seen, we put that fencing up, and we've had people crashing in right there on that fencing, and then we're the ones that are liable and have to replace the fencing. So it's also expensive to get the fences repaired, because we have to get them repaired, or else we're getting gigged there. And we just kind of, we do put it in our five-year plan to put fencing in there, and I do have estimates for wrought iron. And as we get more units online, once we finish the 408 and 303, as we're getting more of these units online, then that's more operating subsidy coming in, and that's more capital funds that'll be allocated to our Housing Authority. So with additional monies, then we could do additional projects.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure you could do it, like, in places, you know, like, you know, if you kind of put a nice fence or whatever, because that would keep vandalism out. Guys talk about trash, you know, people, security, you know, people, you know, because it, it looks, to me, it looks a little bad, you know? It does, you know, because when I seen another houses, and they have nice fences in the back, and people are going in and out, it looks pretty runchy sometimes, you know, but if guys could do it in five-year plan or something, it'd be nice for?
Yes, fencing is in our five-year plan. Everything, Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have a lot of items in our five-year plan. We don't anticipate having to abate a unit because of hazardous material. So as we have to do that instead of a fence, so different things end up being shuffled around based off of need. And our ultimate goal is to keep our units safe and sanitary for our, our tenants, and we need to ensure that that's happening. So sometimes, we do have fencing there, we do have sidewalks there, we have soffits and faces we want to get fixed. We just have to see, as everything comes down, what we can afford. Like, if I have $2,000, but I have to spend it, I can't necessarily spend it on an eighth of a fence. Do you know what I mean? So, but we do try, and we, it does, it is in our five-year plan, and we have been looking at it for as long as I've been there. So at least five years, we've been wanting fences.
How about security? How about police department, you know, going around and?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, as I had, before, we do have three resident police officers or law enforcement officers in almost every area, well, one in each area, we have three. We're allowed to re-buy head. We meet with the police department once a month, and they give us reports on any activity that is in housing. And it's actually been very, pretty good. I mean, they report to us incidents when they occur, and then we deal with them as they occur. Try to, if we have a, say, we have a drug, a drug dealer or somebody, something, and we're getting complaints, we take care of it right away. We report it to the police department, and then the process goes from there. But we have not received too many reports. I mean, for the most part, it's been, it seems like the police, the law enforcement presence really makes a big difference.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any need for executive session?
No. The next item, Madam Chair, is?
Do you have needs to execute?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
I move adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Romelo?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Uliwari?
Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Casey, a second by Commissioner Romelo. Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion carries.
Thank you. 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 Page one.
Present.
Counselor David Al Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Barbara Casey?
Here.
Counselor Vincent Howell?
Here.
Counselor David Uliwari Jr.?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do have a call. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, Agent. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Romano, are you prepared?
Yeah. Let us take a moment, a moment of silence, so each of us can reflect our own faith.
Thank you very much. Ms. Davis?
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
What is the pleasure, Councilor?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Uliwari.
Approval of the agenda is this.
Thank you, you have a second.
Second.
Welcome. Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor David Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Uliwari Jr., and a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for March 24th, which is a special meeting, March 14th, work session, March 28th, which is a special 2018 minutes.
Thank you very much, pleasure to be here.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Casey.
I move that we approve the minutes for March 14th, also for the special meeting on March 14th, and for the work session, and the other special on March 28th.
Thank you very much, you have a second. Welcome. Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Uliwari Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Here.
Yes. I have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is mayor's acquaintance and reports.
I have an on this side.
Mayor's recognitions and proclamations.
I do have a recognition. I want to recognize Counselor David Romano for your eight years of service to the city of Las Vegas. Thank you very much. It's been a lot of work, and it's been commendable. And you have been there for the people, and I want to congratulate you for your years of service. We didn't have time to get you a plaque, but we will follow up with a plaque for you, okay? And MRE will be working on that soon. So thank you very much for everything. I also want to congratulate and commend your son for running a formidable race, and I think he's here. Would you please stand up, our future city councilor? Thank you very much. It was a tough race.
It was.
And you prevailed, and you guys worked exceptionally hard, and you deserve to be commended for that race.
We did what we had to do.
Absolutely, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is public input. We have Mr. Marshall Poole, animal welfare report.
Madam Mayor, city councilors. I'd like to report on news for March this year. We took in 104 animals, that was 69 dogs, 15 of which were puppies, we've been definitely in puppy season, 35 cats. We returned 16 dogs and three cats to their owner guardians. We adopted 23 animals locally. We trapped 17 feral or wild cats, and sent them for spaying and neutering rabies vaccination, and released them back into their neighborhoods where they no longer reproduce, so the colonies gradually diminish. We transported 53 dogs to three agencies in Colorado and other places for adoptions. 55 dogs came in totally unidentified. So that's more than half of the dogs that came in had no identification at all. 63 of the 104 had no proof of rabies vaccination. So that's well more than half had no rabies vaccination. In March, five owner guardians had to pay a local vet for rabies vaccine, because they didn't have rabies certificate for their animal. And we can't, by state law, return an animal to someone without proof of rabies vaccination. So they go to a vet, they pay for the rabies vaccination, and then we can release the animal. But only one of those five brought back the rabies certificate, which is required by both city ordinance and by state law. April 8th to 14th was Animal Control Officer Week here in the United States, and so we wanted to thank Consuelo Caigos and Levi Lujan for their work as animal control officers in the city. We also recognized animal control officers in the county. And we're, both Consuelo and Levi are going to a training and gallop on June 5th that we helped organize for them. And through our partnership with Santa Fe Animal Shelter, in March, we transported 12 citizen-owned dogs and cats to Santa Fe for low-cost spay and neuter. We also transported seven strays and animals that the owners had surrendered for spay neuter. We now have a new relationship with the Santa Fe Animal Shelter, and one of their private donors who are supporting us, and with our own grant money, we can now offer spay neuter to Las Vegas citizens for $25. And that includes transportation of the animal to Santa Fe and back, includes spay and neuter surgery, after-surgery medications, parvostemper vaccination, a rabies vaccination, a collar with the rabies tag and the city license attached, and an embedded microchip that can be used to identify the owner guardian if that animal is ever lost. So, and if that citizen can't afford to pay the $25, we can waive that $25. So spaying neuter really helps control the number of unwanted animals in the city and the county. So that's why we're so committed to doing it. And 25 bucks is a really inexpensive amount of money for something that could cost hundreds of dollars normally. So lastly, we just, this week, did a program in the Rio Gaias School. We did a class on dog bite prevention and safety, along with the Animal Protection New Mexico instructors who came to Las Vegas to conduct the class. And five of the sheriff's deputies attended, and Consuelo from the city animal control officer attended, and worked with the kids to understand better how to approach any stray animals and how to avoid bites. So that's animal welfare in Las Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. The next person is Pamela Davis, and it's Amor de la Tierra Gardening Club, I believe. You gardening? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors.
Good evening.
I live on 12th Street now in Las Vegas. I'm here on behalf of Amor de la Tierra, which is a gardening club that was established this summer, this past summer. And on behalf of our new president, who is Diana Springer, I'm here to talk about the Douglas Street trees. We have put together $200, and we're going to try to get somebody to start watering the trees on Douglas Street, many of which are dying. Seven years ago, when an individual who was sitting on the board, Main Street Board, decided that it would help beautify our city and enhance the businesses on Douglas Street, including two banks, they contributed, many of us, many of the citizens contributed. And so seven years ago, we started planting trees on Douglas Street. And the city was very instrumental in watering those trees. As you may have noticed, particularly between 6th and 7th Street, many of those trees that we spent money to plant are dying. And we're here to tell you that we're going to expend $200 to water these trees, but we need help from the city. And often, these trees will take upwards of 30 to 50 gallons of water to stay alive. So in order to maintain the beauty that was established on Douglas Street, and in order to keep our city beautiful and enhanced by nature, we are appealing to the city to help us with watering those trees. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That concludes public input, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next...
Ms. Caigos, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
But before we go into the presentations, I apologize. I also want to congratulate Counselor David Uliwari on your reelection. Thank you very much, and congratulations on the victory.
May I make a comment on the trees? My understanding is that we are watering the trees, and what we'll do is, I will get back together with the park supervisor and make sure that they are being watered if, I know that the winds have been pretty, pretty strong, but I will get together with public facilities as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is presentations. The first presentation we have is by Mr. Chuck Brown with Sunrise Medical Group.
Thank you. Mayor, councilpeople, and everyone else, thank you for allowing us to take a few minutes tonight. I'm here to introduce something most of you have heard about, and that is our new medical clinic here in Las Vegas, which we're very proud of. Sunrise Medical Group. We're based out of Santa Rosa, New Mexico. My brother Randy Brown is the doctor and owns the clinic there. He also owns a clinic in Tucumcari, and we now have this new clinic here. Additionally to that, we have a pain clinic in Santa Rosa. It's a separate, Santa Rosa, it's a separate business, very successful, has attracted more than 2,000 people for pain, non-surgical pain treatment the past couple of years, and that's expanding. We're expanding into Albuquerque this year. We wanted to introduce you to some members of our team here tonight, and we just wanted to tell the city that we want to be great citizens of the city. We want to be involved in youth projects. We're particularly interested in things like youth little league and things like that. We're involved right now in Las Vegas first already, and we'll be, you'll be seeing more of us and all of us from our clinic over the next few weeks and months as we, as we involve ourselves. Our interest is in providing quality health care in this area of the state. We were all born and raised here. My dad went to school to Highlands. Lots of people, as you know, from Santa Rosa come here. We're sort of sister cities. And anyway, with that, I wanted to introduce Mo Bravo. Many of you know Mo. He was instrumental in opening the door for us here, and I'll turn the time over to him. And when we're done, we've got to go heal some more people, so we'll step away from the meeting. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Chuck. Mayor of council?
Good evening.
Good evening. Buenas tardes. Want to introduce myself. My name is Mo Bravo. I came about a year ago and visited with the mayor and a couple of the city staff in reference to our interest in opening up a clinic here in Las Vegas. We were very well welcomed at that moment in time, but what we didn't have was a provider. We needed a doctor. At that time, I was also visiting with Dr. Jesus Tafoya, which was doing his residency in Lubbock. We were very lucky that here, at the end of last year, Dr. Tafoya had always been, and I have always been in communication, and have been able to talk things over, and remained as friends, which was very important in referencing, you know, medical businesses and stuff coming to different communities. We agreed that Dr. Tafoya was what we needed in our clinic, and thusforth came to the city and were greeted with open arms. And from the day that we agreed to, with the contract with Dr. Tafoya and with the land, or the property owner, we were actually in our new clinic in 26 days. That was, you don't hear that in this business. I mean, it just doesn't happen. And we're very lucky to have the team that we have. We're very lucky to have the support of our, of Dr. Brown and all the staff that comes with us. And we're extremely lucky to have a grown home doctor by the name of Jesus Tafoya, which is from our community here. We're very happy we have him. Things are going very well. We're going to add other services to our clinic, but those services will be brought up by Dr. Tafoya here in just a moment. But I just want to thank everybody for everything that you've done, and it was, as I say in Spanish, muy amable to be part of this community. Thank you so much. With that...
Thank you for making it happen.
Thank you.
For giving us this special...
Thank you. I will introduce Dr. Tafoya. Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dr. Tafoya. Nice to see you all. I want to introduce Emily. She is my medical assistant at my clinic. She's going to make everything happen. Without her hard work, I can't see patients. So thank you guys very much for having us here tonight. We're very pleased to be here. It's a pleasure to be practicing back in my hometown. I've always wanted to come back to this community because the people have consistently supported me my whole career. In high school, you're going to do something great. I got to Highlands. You can do it, you know? And then I got to med school, and my dad did fundraisers for me, and lots of people contributed to that. And I said, how am I going to not come back home and give medical care to these people who, number one, need the medical care? Because we have a lot of physicians that are... Because we have a lot of physicians that are getting ready to retire now. And second of all, that supported me through this. So it was great to come back home. Like Mo said, we performed a miracle basically in February and my patients, I did everything I could to keep them at bay while I was gone and everything worked out great. And so everything, everybody's happy. The new building looks beautiful. If you guys haven't had an opportunity to look at it, I recommend you guys go by. They did such a wonderful job. They worked very hard. Thank you guys very much for making this happen. It's, it's been a pleasure. One of the biggest things that is near and dear to my heart when it comes to medicine is tackling this opioid crisis. This has been one of the biggest problems plaguing our country right now. Unfortunately, this is something that was done by physicians a long time ago. And, you know, at the time, there wasn't a whole lot of alternatives. It was either leave the patient suffering in pain or let's do something about it with the only options we have. Well, the fact is, many years has gone by now and we have other options. One of the big things that I look for is what are alternatives to chronic opioids for treating the pain? And the pain clinic that we have in Santa Rosa has been a huge tool for me because now I can justify getting patients off these medications. I'm not just going to take you, your meds away and let you suffer. I'm going to give you a better alternative. The way I describe to my patients about opioids is we're putting a very dangerous Band-Aid on your problem instead of addressing the problem. And so unfortunately for a lot of patients, there's neurological, you know, damage that's been done. A lot of people have significant fractures in their vertebrae. I don't know if you guys have ever been to neurosurgeons before, but they don't operate as much as you would hope they would. And there's a good reason for it because even after they operate, there's still a high chance that it's not going to get rid of the pain. And the whole point of the operation would be to reduce the pain. And so for that reason, there's a lot of times when they don't think it's going to be successful. They recommend non-surgical options. Well, unfortunately, it's a lot easier to write a script for an opioid and have the patient go than to actually sit down and listen to your patient and come up with an intricate plan that's going to include physical therapy, medications, and now, you know, people are getting injections. Our pain clinic does what's called radiofrequency ablation therapy. And that's more of a permanent fix to getting rid of the pain. If we can get their pain controlled, now we can start titrating the medications down. So unfortunately, since I've been here, I've acquired a lot of patients who are on chronic opioids. And we've kind of agreed with the patients to say, hey, let's have a plan here. I'm not going to cut off your opioids instantly, but I want you to know that it is my ultimate goal to get you off these medications. But let's address the pain and then we'll slowly come down on them. It's a lot safer than just saying, I don't prescribe opiates. I can't help you. I don't treat chronic pain. Because what happens to these patients is they go to the streets to get these medications. The pills sell for anywhere from $10 to $15 each on the street. Heroin is much cheaper than that. And so guess what? We end up with, with people addicted to heroin and overdosing. So I think we are doing the patients a justice and a kind of service by providing them with more permanent relief of their pain and then safely getting them off opiates. Other services we're going to be offering in our clinic is going to be on allergy testing. A lot of times, you've got to go to an allergist to have this done. It's very expensive testing. And then when you see a specialist for it, of course, the cost goes up quite a bit. So now we can actually do this in our clinic. One of the things we're already doing in our clinic is for patients who are already on allergy shots, we store the allergy shots for them and then they come weekly to get these done instead of driving all the way to Sanford, Albuquerque. So that's a big help for these patients who suffer from allergies. And, and I try and treat the allergies with the more common stuff first. Because a lot of times, a patient will want a referral to an allergist immediately and it's just unnecessary in many cases. But when we've exhausted our, our efforts and we have no other choices, it is a good option. And so now we can do that locally. We are also trying to hire a counselor. And because another issue, you know, we always focus on opiates, but there's some other dangerous medicines that are out there. Excuse me. Xanax is probably one of the most dangerous medicines out there. And unfortunately, a lot of the patients who are on Xanax for anxiety are also on hydrocodone or oxycodone for pain. The combination of these two medicines can be deadly. It causes respiratory suppression and especially if you're on both, it's, you know, double the effect. So there's reports of a lot of people dying in their sleep from taking too much of these meds. So what we're doing is safely switching them to another benzodiazepine, which is the same class of medicines for anxiety, so we can slowly taper them off. There's much better treatments out there than using benzodiazepines and our goal is to switch them over to that. But if we could get them to a more long-acting benzodiazepine, we can have them take less pills each day and then slowly taper it off until they're safely off. With, you know, everyone worries about withdrawal with drugs. The only drugs that are really dangerous to withdraw from are going to be opiates, I mean, sorry, benzodiazepines and alcohol. And they work on the same receptors on the brain, so it makes sense. So you don't want to quit somebody cold turkey on that. They can actually die. They go into seizures, delirium tremens, the COMDts for short. It's deadly. And so we have to be very careful about how we do this. And so if we can safely get them off of this, get their anxiety under better control so they don't need these meds, we've done them a service. Well, another joint effort to help this be successful is to have counseling services involved. And so I think us bringing in a counselor is going to do a huge service to this community. Also, I don't want to get to the point where we're going to stop accepting new patients. Well, if I just stay by myself, it's not going to be long before that happens. My schedule is booked pretty far out already. We just started. So we're looking at getting another, another couple of mid-level providers to work with me there so that we can keep seeing more and more patients so that we can eventually basically see everyone who needs a physician in this city. So there is a lot of potential for growth for this clinic and I'm really excited about our future and just build some strong roots here in Las Vegas. And I'm happy they brought me in to do it because I'm very passionate about our community.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Tafoya. One of the concerns that we had when we initially met with Mo was that in addition to the counseling services, because you're providing an incredible service, was the issue of hopefully a future treatment center in the area. I don't know if you have any plans for that in the near future and the long-term range? So what are your thoughts on that?
I haven't discussed that with them yet, but I certainly think that's a reasonable thing to think of because this community in particular and surrounding communities are very in need of that. And, you know, a lot of people, we think of our town, but the surrounding areas, some of these real small towns are really plagued by this. And so if we can come up with a treatment center to help them do that, you know, I think that would be worth talking about. Of course, I would have to talk to Dr. Brown and the rest of the team to see if that's something that they're interested in, but I certainly think it's a reasonable thing to consider.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here and congratulations.
Thank you guys for having us. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. The next presentation is by Leah Kanutzen, presented by Professor Edward Martinez and it's on the river's restoration work and how it positively impacts our water security.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos tardes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm here on behalf of the Hermit speak watershed alliance and to talk a little bit about the Guaynas River Park restoration project that we're initial, starting, already starting. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about, let's see. It freezes me. So again, want you to think a little bit about how lucky, how lucky we are here in Las Vegas that we have, actually have a river, a stream that flows through the city and the potential that comes with that as far as economic development, tourism, recreation, health and wellness for, for our residents and those kinds of things. So really, I want you to think about that as, as I'm going through, through the presentation. But I also want to, to point out that these types of efforts are, take a lot of effort, take a lot of time, take a lot of resources. And so therefore, there's a need for the community to come together and work on something like this together. And what I mean by the community is the different organizations, the city, the county, the police department, other, other entities, other stakeholders, the business owners. And so all of these entities coming together to work on something like this, that would be a benefit to, to all of us as a whole. And so we, we've already started something like that where we're calling the Guaynas River Park Collaborative. So where we have some entities, some individuals that are already involved. This is a short list of some of those individuals. Of course, the watershed alliance that is, is leading some of this, the Economic Development Corporation, the county, the city, Casa de Cultura, and so on. And so in part, I'm here to, to solicit the assistance, the partnership of the city in furthering this initiative forward. A little bit about what Hermit speak watershed alliance is going to be doing on the river. And so the, the idea is to develop, restore, restore the stream itself, but at the same time, try to develop the park or the, the trail that goes along the river. And this particular project that I'm talking about now is a project that starts at Bridge Street and ends almost at Prince Street. And so we have secured funding to begin to do some of that work. And the idea is to restore the river to an ecologically sound, functioning river. And that may mean different things to different people, but we really want to look at the river from the point of view of, does it function like it should naturally? Ecologically naturally? And, and so that's the, the main focus. With that, we would like to also work on the, on the trail itself. And how can we improve the trail in addition to not only the river, the bosque along the river, then alongside, at the next level, then have maybe park benches, picnic areas where people can recreate or, and then the trail itself that can be used in very many different ways for people to get along, for health and wellness and those kinds of things. And so, but really, the main focus is starting from an ecological point of view and then can we somehow bring together the utility and the use of the trail and the river, but try to maintain the health of the river at the same time? And so again, I, I believe that you can imagine, and, and, you know, I've studied, as a professor, I've studied the river many times and I have actually found trout in the river. But I've also have learned that the water temperature and turbidity levels and oxygen levels are also kind of high in some places that it won't support trout. But I think that if we have trout in the river, then you can imagine the recreation and that could actually happen in those, in, in that section of the river. And so thinking in that way, how do we restore a river to a point where we can support trout? I guess if you can use that as a measure. But also restore it in such a way that we can utilize it for all these other things that I mentioned. And so those are some of the ideas. Recreation, picnicking, health and wellness, exercise, bike riding, all these kinds of things. So, but, but with that, we know that probably the biggest issue is going to be safety along the riverwalk. I, I would imagine that that's probably an issue right now is that there's safety problems. The other thing is how do we maintain it? How do we make sure that the trash is, is being collected? How do we make sure that the people that are recreating and or using the trail for whatever it is that they're using it are safe? And so the idea is to create this riverwalk that has lighting, has these amenities along it. But again, the assistance that is needed here is for a project like this is bringing all of the stakeholders together to support this type of idea. Because again, the, the work that Hermit speak watershed alliance is doing is on the river itself and the restoration of the river itself. And so then, how do we, as a community, come together to begin to provide the resources that are needed in order to develop the rest of it? The trail itself? And, and so those are, are some of the, the questions that I have for you, but also the, the solicitation that I have is ideas and how can the city partner with Hermit speak and some of these other entities to make sure that this eventually happens? And, and, you know, we're not trying to kid anyone. This is a very long-term plan. It's not something that is going to happen in a couple of years. It's something that's probably going to happen five, 10, 15 years down the road. The, again, the, the, in, in talking about the ecological functioning of the system, having a trail, I think, is very appealing along the river, but the, the right type of trail. And those kinds of things need to be considered, something that is permeable because we also know that there's runoff issues when we do or hopefully when we eventually get rain and or snow here in Las Vegas, those are issues that we have to deal with. Is how do we deal with a runoff? The street runoff that's coming into the river? Because that in itself poses a problem in the river. And so how do we address those things as this restoration is occurring? How do we partner with local businesses? I've been in cities like San Antonio, I think is a, a good example, in Colorado and cities in Colorado, in, in Oregon, in Washington State, where they have a river running through some of those cities. And, and the beauty and the benefit that those rivers bring to that city's development and economics is great. And so I think there's a great potential in partnering with business owners for making this a reality. So like I mentioned earlier, the, the Guaynas watershed is received funding for what we're calling the River stewardship program. And this money is being used to restore the river in this section of, within the city. And again, I know that it's difficult to see, but essentially, like I said earlier, from right around Bridge Street to just above Prince Street. And so there's enough money to do the restoration. And some of the things that we're trying to do is make the river look something like this. And this is an actual work that has already been done in the upper Guaynas watershed. So the idea is to increase habitat, different types of habitat, reinforce our banks, try to increase the relationship, the natural relationship that should be there between the river itself, the water that's running down the river and the bank and the flood plain. And that in itself, if, if we can reestablish the interaction between the river water that's flowing through there with our flood plain, then that in itself will keep more water in our community by increasing the water levels in our water table. And so these are ecologically sound ideas here that not only beautify the area, but also increase our, our ability to hold water within the watershed. And so these are, again, the idea is to create pool ripple run, kind of the idea of what this river naturally did at one time before a whole lot of settlement came in and manipulated the river is a pool ripple run type of morphology where we have those different types of habitats that then become areas for other types of organisms to, to be able to inhabit. And so again, you know, having those different types of habitats then also increases the recreational opportunities that would be available to us as residents and recreators on, on the area. The other thing that we would like to do is create interpretive areas, so interpretive signs along the river involved into museums or to, maybe other riverwalks or tours, outdoor tours, where we can provide some sort of educational information along the trail. And the idea is to do this. And, and I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce Elizabeth Juarez. She can, if you want to add a little bit to this piece. Elizabeth, I know you've been working on this one.
That's right. Hi, Mayor and councilors. My name's Elizabeth Wados, and I'm the Education Director for the Hermit's Peak Watershed Alliance. This picture here is just an image, a mock-up, it's not the actual sign, because there are a couple of signs that are in process. Actually, we have a handful of high school students from West Las Vegas working on the design for these two interpretive signs. They, we received a grant to do, to include them in this design project, so they're already working on our river park. So, the vision is 10, 15 years down the line for this to happen, but it's starting now, right now. So, they're going to, they're making a sign that explains what wetlands are and the benefit of wetlands, because there are some wetlands right adjacent to the high school, so there'll be a sign mounted there that tells about wetlands, that the students have designed and put on the sign what they have learned and what they think is interesting. And also, one of the other sign that they were tasked to design is a sign that gives some history and culture of the Guaynas River and our town of Las Vegas. And it's interesting what they came up with, it's a simple map, but they became really interested in the acequias, because that's sort of, every time they looked at the history, it came right back to that we settled on the river and made a diversion, made an acequia, and subsisted here. So, it's a very simple sign that shows that, so this is the beginning, and they're so proud to be the first ones to make the signs, it's a group of our own high school students. And it's starting with them, and ultimately, so just one more thing, because I'll go on and on, because it's such an exciting thing, that the great thing is that ultimately, we will, this will be our Guaynas River Park, whatever the name is, that's what the description is. And there could be dozens of signs along, so that whenever we're out for a walk, you could take time and read and learn a little bit about the things that the experts in ecological restoration know, how is it that the pools make it so the water tables higher, how is it that the water's filtered? Because one of the things in the design for the actual restoration work that's happening is that something called rain gardens will be installed in the West Las Vegas High School parking lots to filter the water that runs in from the parking lots and off Moreno Street and all there, and filters it, cools the water down, cleans it before it runs into the river. These great pieces that are great tools for learning will be part of the actual park. And that's where the education piece comes in.
So, the next step is really thinking about how can we come together and how can the city help? And like I said, the funding that we already received is for a certain part of the river, eventually, we would like to do all the way from Mills to Grand Avenue, and then even beyond Mills upstream. And so, how can we come together to bring funding to be able to do some of these things that we've been talking about here? And really, in my, from my perspective, I believe that a good start, if the city could appoint an individual that could come to our meetings, work closely with what it is that we're doing, and that would be a great start. If an individual could be appointed by the city to represent the city in this collaborative that we've already created. And so, that's the end of the presentation there. If you have questions, we have Elizabeth's information there, her email, but that's the presentation. I really do appreciate that you've given us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez and Ms. Wados. It's commendable what you're doing with the riverwalk. I've been here from the inception till the expansion of it, and it's been quite impressive. In the past, and Councilor Howell was here as well, we have worked on funding, some of the projects, or tying some of our funding, and staffing with the riverwalk project. So, we're looking forward to that. And Marie, we'll get back to you as to who can appoint on that. And thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Professor Martinez, do you have public input meetings scheduled already out there, so the public can give you input?
Yes, and we're also attempting to provide this same presentation to many different stakeholders. I actually would like to present to the Police Department, and anyone else that you might suggest, but we have a long list of who we would like to present this to. And then, the other thing that we also have planned is to also have, I guess you can call them educational workshops, where we talk about what is a healthy, ecologically functioning system? Because like I said, I think we all have various perceptions of what that might look like, and what we would like to do is educate everyone in what that really looks like. Because someone might think that this is healthy and ecologically sound, when in reality, it might not be.
And in addition to those things, we're starting monthly, what we're calling now Steering Committee meetings for the Guaynas River Park Collaborative, and they actually start tomorrow. They're open to the public, but we're taking the volunteers who came to the first public stakeholder meeting, and we're starting there tomorrow. That's tomorrow, Thursday, 3:30 in Hewitt Hall. Everyone's welcome to come and be part of that, to take those next steps. And there'll be monthly meetings where we're making sure that the word gets out, so everyone knows they're welcome to be part of this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes the presentation, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda. You're tall, I would have to be jumping. The next item is a City Manager's Report. The first person I want to, we've called, is Mr. Billy Montoya, and he will speak to us regarding the fire issues, fire preventions, and some of the issues that are happening throughout the state. Mr. Montoya.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me speak about the fire dangers that are occurring. I'm sure you all know that how dry it is outside, so I won't take up too much of your time, but I do have a small packet. Could we hand these out, please? Now, the first thing in the packet is going to be the ordinance on open burn, or any burning within the city limits. We're trying to get out there and get the word out to the public that there is no open burns allowed whatsoever in city limits. This ordinance has been in effect for several years already, trying to get out there. We've, we're going to be going on the radio, probably reaching out to Mr. Einer and Mr. Brooks from the optic as well, to just notify the people that it's really dry, we can't take any chances, the high wind conditions that are occurring are going to send a wildfire really, really quick. I've been attending several summits and trainings over the last two weeks, and it's like this throughout the entire state. Santa Fe just went into stage one restrictions in their forest, we went through their watershed. Thinning is a big, is a big deal with the watershed portion of it. This summit that I attended went through all levels, from municipalities all the way to the federals. So, a bunch of stakeholders are involved in protecting the watershed. So, I'm going to be talking with Ms. Gilvery as well, on what we need to do for our watershed to protect it as well. So, if you go to the next portion of it, where it's the Predictive Services, that's the National Fire Center. And it gives us an outlook period between March and June. And if you see those four squares on the side, starts in March, ends in June, you can see that New Mexico increases very, very severe. I won't go down through all the executive summaries and all the, it's a little bit of literature for you guys to read when you have a spare moment, but it's very evident that we're not going to be seeing any moisture anytime soon, so we need to try to take the proactive approach as much as possible. Now, the next map that you're going to look at is just the nationwide map. This is from the National Weather Service, and it also shows how the drought persists throughout our entire state, our neighboring states, so on and so forth. Now, I showed you our ordinance. The next portion of your packet is going to be the fire restrictions that the county just imposed. They have an ordinance as well, but they wanted to do a resolution to make sure that everybody realizes that there are no burns allowed throughout the entire San Miguel County. That was if the, on prescribed burns, it was if we could do it on private lands and so forth. So, I spoke with Chief Duran, and he took it to his commissioners, and they voted on doing a no burn throughout San Miguel. On the next portion, you're going to see, I included the ordinance on fireworks and restrictions that we may have to consider around June time, to see, I would have to bring it to the governing body, we'd have to do a resolution on it. In the event that the drought conditions persist, we're going to need to make a decision on not allowing fireworks period, so that might just be something to keep in the back of your head to be thinking about that portion of it. Now, we can't ban them completely throughout the state or anything like that, the governor is the only one that has the authority to do that. But I just thought I would include it, so that way you can look over the portion of the fines that can be imposed, stuff like that. I met with the chief earlier today, and we spoke about some type of fines that we can do for both fireworks and open burn, and we're going to probably include code enforcement on that. Okay? That wraps up the majority of my presentation. The only other thing that I have for you is, yesterday, I attended a FEMA course, and it was on continuity of government. In the event of a catastrophic emergency, or whatever the situation may be, we need to have, they call it continuity planning in place, where all the stakeholders, all the elected officials, county officials, you name it, we all get together, we have a plan in place, have who's going to be in charge, three people, be just what they recommend, so that way that, say, Madam Mayor's not here, maybe we can have one of the councilors in your spot, or the manager, so on and so forth. It almost relates to our emergency plan that we have with the Office of Emergency Management. It just goes in a bit more detail, and what we focused on was planning, organizing, and equipping, training, exercising, and evaluating. And what that boils down to is, if we already have the plan, we have the equipment, we train on it, we need to put it in effect, so that way we're not caught with our pants down in the event of an emergency. Because basically, it's not if an emergency occurs, it's when it occurs, and if we take the proactive approach and try to exercise these plans that we're going to put in place, I think we'll be, we'll have a much more success rate on that. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
No problem.
The next person is Ms. Maria Gilvery, and she will be speaking about her four wards and four-week cleanup, successful cleanup, I think.
Mayor, councilors, Madam Manager, Utilities Department Solid Waste Division is working on their clean city initiative, and the purpose is to be able to reinstitute the Keep America Beautiful Project. So, one of the first parts of that project, of getting that project back going, was the four wards in four weeks. So, this past, I think it was about, started about a month and a half ago, so over a four-week period, we had 337 people, from not only city employees, but also we had councilors come out, we did have residents come out, and they were able to pick up 59,727 pounds of trash. So, 30 tons of trash were picked up around our community in all four wards. That includes 258 tires were picked up, 90 mattresses, and 35 TVs. That, one of the things we wanted to do was kind of quantify what this cost to the city was. If you consider all the man-hours, if you consider the transfer station fees and the disposal costs for all that, it was, and individual disposal costs for the larger items, because we do have to pay additional costs for the tires and for the mattresses and for the TVs. The city spent $12,000 separate than normal for, to pick up that 60,000 pounds of trash. So, it was definitely a good turnout, it was definitely a good project. We will be doing this again, I'd like to do this a couple of times a year, until we get to the point where we don't have trash to pick up. But it's always going to happen, you know, when we have the winds that we have, trash starts blowing out of trash cans. We're going to continue to try and inform the public of the ways to put their trash cans, the ways to keep the lids closed, different things that the community can do to try and minimize this trash that's blowing around the community, but it's going to happen, and the city staff will be there to help pick up what we can and continue to keep our community beautiful. And we are looking forward to reinstituting the Keep America Beautiful Program, so we can get some additional funding from the federal government to be able to help us in this initiative. So, if anybody has any questions, oh, actually, I did want to say thank you very much to Capital Scrap, to Franken Companies, to New Mexico True, and Wakim. They all were able to provide pizzas and foods and supplies and tables and chairs, and anything that we needed to be able to take care of this event. So, thank you again to the community for being there and helping city staff. And again, thank you to the councilors that came out and picked up trash. Sorry, you weren't feeling well that day, but still, thank you so much, Councilor Casey, for coming out, you're a trooper. So, if anybody has any questions?
No, but congratulations, thank the staff, thank the volunteers, and everybody else that participated in the cleanup, it's looking good. The winds have picked up, have brought in some additional new trash, so hopefully, we'll have a cleanup, as you stated twice a year, that would help.
We're actually, we'll absolutely work towards that. And in addition, we had the amnesty timeframe as well, so we were able to get a lot of trash from residents as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gilvery, did we notice any graffiti problems out there?
I didn't ask for a report on that, so I'd have to get back to my staff. We do have graffiti issues, but I didn't ask for them to report on that.
And if any of the wards do have it, can we ask for assistance to get it taken care of, or you?
I think Public Works kind of helps out with some of that.
Yes, they do. But I can check with them and see if there has been any issues or anything that has come up with graffiti. I know they do help with it, though. And if there's any areas that we need to address, please let me know, and then we'll move on.
There's some on Mountain View.
Really? I go through there every day.
Right near.
Sorry.
Right near the church.
Okay.
Mountain View.
Okay. I'll be glad to take a look at that and have them.
It's the brick wall that's got a lot of graffiti.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
The next person that we have is Ms. Regina Maruho, and she will be, just giving you a short summary of the fiestas. I know that there's been a lot of inquiries about the fiestas and how we're doing, and how are the plans going, and so, I had asked her this evening to just give you a short update and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. So, on the fiestas, we are moving along. Good thing is, we're a couple of months ahead of what we were last year. We have pretty much our full schedule for the entertainment. We're just doing some final changes and moves around on the schedule, but we pretty much almost have that done. Our vendors, I'd say we have about 85% of our vendors in, we're pretty much almost done with that. The good thing about that one is, we will probably be filling up a good portion of Bridge Street as well this year, because we've had a lot of vendors that wanted to come in from, not only throughout New Mexico, but other states like Texas, Colorado, Arizona, there's a few others. So, we do have a really good vendor set up for this year. As far as the parade goes, those applications are out, they're finally starting to come in, of course, those go to the last days, so that's one. The reina, everything is pretty much set up for the reina as far as scheduling, the applications are out. We also are working on doing the reinita this year, so we'll have ages eight to 12 that will also be participating. We have that application that just got approved, and so we'll be soliciting for those, or putting that out, so that they can start applying. As far as the city, we have a meeting this week, so we'll be all getting together to finalize. finalize things like we have concerns about the ramps behind, to be able to get equipment up and down for entertainment, so we'll be addressing that. I've been speaking with Chief Billy to keep up on the fireworks issue, to make sure that we're going to be able to do it safely. Also, we are looking at a six-day event this year, so we're trying to see how we could do it best to keep the employees actually participating, but at the same time, to make sure we're not going over anybody's budget or anything like that. And I think that's pretty much the main things of the fiestas, that's always a concern, so I just wanted to update and, and let you know if you have any questions.
Thank you for the update. Let's just hold it.
Once we have a, once we have a final schedule, we'll make that available to you as well, and that way you'll, we can make any adjustments if need be, but we're still making some of those changes and still contacting, but we are meeting, we're meeting on, I believe it's every two weeks is what we're meeting with.
Yeah, it's every two weeks, and then I believe probably mid-month next week, we'll start on a weekly meeting, like we usually do right before the fiestas.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Maruho, this is not in reference to the Fourth of July fiestas, but in June, we're going to be having Little League District tournaments here. Are we doing anything in preparation for that?
I...
Because there's going to be a lot of people coming into our town.
I, I know that Parks is doing a lot.
Parks is getting the, the parks ready. We were, they have been doing the watering and they're getting the fields ready as well. And so I believe that we will be ready, and I, I thought that was, is that June, or is it early July?
I believe that they said, to me, they said it was June.
But we, we understood that it was going to be at Rodriguez Park, and we were going to be getting ready and starting to meet with those folks as well.
Are we doing any marketing in regards to that, welcoming the tournaments here?
That, that would be, that would be a good thing for us to do, I, and I understand that we were going to meet, I think we need to meet with the Little League personnel first, and get the contact person, state contact, because I guess the state has to come in and, and inspect the fields, and then at that point.
And I, excuse me, I spoke to Kirby, and Kirby's excited about this whole situation. I have a list of all the group contacts, the board members.
Okay.
And I think that we can move forward with marketing this incredible district tournament. I think it's going to be great, it's like 32 teams, is what I'm hearing?
That's what I understand.
Yes, so it's going to be great, it's going to be huge. So we've got to do everything that we can. Also, I think we also need to coordinate this with the hotels and the lodgers to see where we're at with this, where we have enough insufficient rooms for them to be able to stay in. If not, maybe bread and breakfast, bed and breakfasts, maybe we can tie that into that as well.
Awesome.
And of course, Story Lake, party, parking, here's the destination.
Oh, and then, sorry, on, on that topic, Madam Mayor and Council, we, we are having the Fiesta Run, so Southwest Capital did contact us and say we are doing that this year. We're also having a youth day that Monday, which I believe is June, July 2nd. So that whole morning and afternoon is dedicated to all performers that are 21 and under, such as Gabriela Tofoya, Gabriel Senna, and all these other youth performers that we have. So we'll be doing that. And then we have other groups that are also doing stuff during fiestas, such as the rec center. The rec center will be holding a mushball tournament that weekend. So there's going to be quite a bit that's going to be going on, and once we, like Amory said, once we actually finalize the schedule and know everything that's going on, we'll present it to you and give you that final schedule.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next person we have is Ms. Tana Vega, and she'll be reporting, I know there were some questions about the Las Vegas night and the, the expenses and revenues that were brought in, and so, Ms. Vega?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The Las Vegas Day at the Legislature was funded solely by contributions and sponsorships by the two local schools, New Mexico Highlands, Luna, the banks, our community banks, in addition to several local businesses. And we received a total of 22,900 in contributions and sponsorships expenditures. We spent 22,470 dollars to La Fonda Holding, that was for the room and the buffet.
Yes.
Meals for the mariachi band were $191, and invitations and envelopes and other miscellaneous decorations for, for the room, for a total of 22,900.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, if you have any questions. I think it's outstanding that we're able to raise every single penny to fund the event, and it didn't, didn't take a hit on the actual budget, so congratulations.
Madam Mayor, I have a short report. I know that the city staff, we've been pretty busy, especially since, since December, January. We started off with the Story Lake project, and, and we didn't stop, I mean, Mayor and Council haven't stopped, as well as staff. I just wanted to go through a few things that, that the staff has done, that I think are, are wonderful projects that the departments have completed in spite of their daily operations. They have, they have continued to bring new ideas, and with the new generation, they bring us new ideas, and I think that we, that's a welcoming, that's a welcoming thing for the city of Las Vegas. We, the Mayor and Council had approved the purchase of hangar doors at the airport, and that was at a cost of $78,000, and we didn't need to fund any, any, move any dollars around, we had the dollars available, and I know that that project will be ongoing in, is that a part of April, early part of May? And so that'll be completed, that was a safety issue, and so we were able to complete, we're able, we're going to be able to complete that project with very little harm to anyone, and still keep our planes and still keep the airport functioning. The senior center submitted capital outlay applications, and I believe they got funded for various needed equipment, both in Las Vegas, San Miguel, and Pecos. And so that was something that Ms. Alasada, as well as her staff, completed not too long ago, and it looks very, looks very promising for us, and so I, I think it's, it's wonderful that, that the senior center has the, has the equipment. They're now looking for, I believe, a bingo machine and a pool table. And so we'll be looking for funding for that, and if anyone has any ideas, we welcome that. Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, they're submitting their budget recommendations, and we'll be able to bring that recommendation over to Mayor and Council, so that our parties have reviewed the recommendation, and everyone is satisfied with, with what we're going to be recommending and what we'll be implementing for the next 2018, 19 year. The summer youth employment progress, employment program is in progress. Applications are being accepted through April 25th. They're being accepted, accepted at the New Mexico Workforce Connections. The date of the program is from June 11th through August the 3rd, and it's a 20-hour, 20 hours per week, for a total, total of eight weeks. We are looking at hiring 50 young members of our community, and the workforce really takes them through a process of the application process, the interview process, and really recommends at least 50 individuals. And then what we'll do is, we'll have a drawing for, if we have more than 50 individuals, then we'll, we'll come in and we'll have a, a drawing for those 50 slots, after they've been, after they've, they've gone through their screening process. The recreation staff is doing wonderful, they're, they're looking very, their budget is looking great, their cash balance is in the positive, and we really need to thank that staff for those, for that. They really are looking at a lot of programs. They're writing grants, they're in the process of writing grants for our summer view, and so we're looking at other departments that come in. I know Police Department, I believe, is assisting a little bit with some of the statistical information for Recreation Department, and so we're assisting, but they're doing well. And we look forward to maybe our, more of our summer programs being, and more of the swimming programs as well, being, we're going to be more active, and of course, the more active we are, the more youth we can employ, and the more personnel we can employ. Museum and other staff members held an Easter egg hunt. They hid 10,000 eggs, and that, that was, that's, that's amazing, that they would hide 10,000 eggs for, for kids, approximately, and my understanding is that 600 people attended this event. And so that was a very successful event, and to pool 10,000 eggs and to hide is, is a lot, you really have to give those people credit. The ID, the IT division, and I know that some of you suffered some communication issues with the city for a couple of days. Last Sunday, there was a balloon that hit lines, and it threw our, our phone system off, but our phone system is really on its last leg, so we will come back to Mayor and Council and recommend a brand-new phone system that we're going to be looking at. That's essential for our, for our communications as well. They have been looking at it, we're going to push that project up a little bit, hopefully by June, the, the first part of June, or, or early July, we can have that completed for you, and, and maybe have a phone system that, that'll work, and that is fully functioning for, for everyone. They have also installed a work order system that is being utilized by the, by, by staff, and that is going well. The Police Department, their, their staff are applying for a grant to start the rehab of the shooting range. Matching funds are going to be set aside this budget here, for, in case there is a matching that needs to be added in, then we're going to be looking at setting aside some dollars. The shooting range, and I don't know if all of you were aware of this, but they did have 1,000 tires that needed to be removed. And so the directive was issued by the Environment Department that we needed to remove those tires. The Police Department quickly partnered up with Solid Waste, and before we knew it, the, the tires had been removed, and then had been shredded and, and delivered to, to Agon Mountain. So that was a project that took a lot of departments' help, a lot of departments' initiatives, and, but we, they were able to do it, and they did it within a two- to three-week period, if I'm not mistaken. Community Development and Public Facilities, they have submitted the first part of a CDBG grant. We haven't, we haven't been funded for a CDBG grant in a number of years, and so we undertook that undertaking. We passed the first step, and so we're going to move on to the second step. The project that they're looking at, and they did have public meetings, they weren't very well attended, but the project that they're looking at is the Hot Springs Boulevard project, and so we're looking at that. They have gone on to the, the next step. The nice thing is that Utilities is going to be installing new lines at that site, and hopefully we can coordinate that project at the same time. And that way, we only, we only disturb the, the street that one time, and so we're working together on, on that project as well. The, the Hot Springs Boulevard project is part of the ICIP plan, so that was, that was a, a good thing for us to do, and, and a good thing for us to have as far as the ICIP plan. Speaking about the ICIP plan, that is due on September 4th, thank you, Madam Mayor. The training is going to be held on May, May the, May, sometime May 2018. If we have any suggestions or anything of that sort, from any, from any members of the council, please let us know, and as far as, we'll be bringing back the, the final report to you, so that you can put them in order, in the, in the order that you feel is, is in the best interest of the city. The South Grand Avenue project appears to be making some progress. It may be, it may be bid, it may be, it may be put out to bid sooner than what we thought, and so we're looking at that, and we're looking at more construction dollars, and the more construction dollars we have, the higher our GRT, the higher our GRTs come in. The E. Romero Museum is out to bid, and that was that 150,000 that Main Street was funded for, in conju, in coordination with our Fire Department, and we're pretty involved in that project as well. But they are handling all of the funding. We have seen a slight growth in the GRT, and I believe it's because of the construction that we are looking, we are seeing throughout the city and throughout the county. We were out at Radnor Dam, and I don't believe that we receive, Finance Director and I are arguing about whether we receive any of those funds, I don't think we do, but we've seen a lot of construction projects here in Las Vegas, and if we could get Grand Avenue started and a couple of other projects started, we would probably see a lot more funding. We also, the Finance Director and myself were able to negotiate an A2 bond rating on behalf of the city of Las Vegas, and Moody's Investors Service summarized that Las Vegas, and the reason why they gave us that A2, that A2 bond rating was summarized that Las Vegas benefits from a healthy fund balance, which is good for us, and it, it benefits from the liquidity we have, and also the modest debt burden that we have. So they look at a lot of cities and a lot of municipalities and a lot of counties, and then they rate us, and so we're, we're glad that that's, that that was an A2 bond rating. That'll, I'm sorry, Counselor.
It's all right.
Did it, are you right?
No, I'm all right.
So the A2 bond rating helps us as far as bonds, whenever we sell bonds, or whenever we, we are looking at financing with NMB, and those things help, help out the city a lot, because it keeps those interest rates down. Interim budgets are being worked on by the departments. We'll start scheduling hearings, scheduling a review with the department directors, and then we'll schedule something with Mayor and Council to come in. We'll have each of the department directors present, so that they can defend their budgets in front of you, and then hopefully we can move on. The only thing that we're experiencing right now, as a matter of fact, we had a decrease in the workman's comp rate, so we went down a little bit. However, we're going to be looking at a 4% increase in, in health benefits, being the health, the dental, and the vision, is my understanding. As I said, Radnor Dam is ongoing. Let me back up just a minute. The schedule I gave you was the Recreation Department fee schedule. I know that a lot of times I've had inquiries about, questions about the fee schedules and what, and what the charges are. We may have to come back and look at this once again, but I just wanted to give you an update. Radnor Dam is ongoing, and you, it was very enlightening today, we were out there today. The contractor is very enthusiastic, and he is working towards meeting the deadlines that he has for himself and for the project. They have another project that'll be ongoing in Colorado, and so, but I, I was very, very, very impressed, and I don't know if anyone can just, I don't, I guess you can't, can't go up there, because I have to be, I was escorted, but it was, it's amazing what they have already done, some of the work that, that has been done. We are days away from closing on the property for Castaneda, we've been working on that for a couple of months, and so we're looking at just getting the final, well, I think we have the final paperwork over to Territorial, and so we're going to be moving forward with that. We're also, PD is also working on reestablishing the Region Four program, and so we're looking at that and seeing how we can fund that, and it's a perfect opportunity for us, because we can set aside funds that we need to set aside, and look at other, other projects and other programs that some of the departments are going to be needing. The Las Vegas night, I can almost say that it was a successful night, since we had quite a few people there, and, and then also because it was self-funded by sponsorships, and so that was a good thing. Keep America Beautiful grant funding is, was, is being submitted, or has been submitted, and this was due to the hard work of Utilities in the four weeks and four wards cleanups. Scheduling with Animal Welfare Coalition, I'll do that as a, very quickly, I need to get together with Mr. Poole, he will be out of town for a couple of weeks, but other than that, he's, he's, he's indicated that he would like to meet with us, and I know he wants to meet with us on budget issues as well. According to our Utility Director, I believe, and I don't know if you have any questions, but we do have a 600-day water supply, so I think if people are worried about not having water, she has indicated that we, we have a 600-day water supply. We use 1.5 million gallons of water a day, in comparison to the 2.5 million gallons that we at one point did. gallons that we at one point did. And so that's a good thing and thank you. Arbor Day, Arbor Day is on April 27th at 2:00 PM at El Cristo Park. And so we'd like to have all of you there. I think it'd be great to have all of you there. Also, OEM concerns, Madam Mayor, we will be meeting with the county manager and other staff members to discuss OEM. And the last thing is the Star Lake project. We're not quite done with that. We're looking at the financing piece, which is the final piece, but we have a couple of things that we still need to to complete and those things are ongoing, but as soon as we, as soon as those are completed, then we'll move on and and go on to the next step. I did want to inform you and I, I thought it'd be best that I inform you that Paul Cassidy, our financial advisor, will be retiring and so we will have, I believe it's Eric Holden taking over. He's been with their company as well, but I think we're all used to seeing Paul Cassidy. He knows our history. He knows, has a lot of knowledge, a lot of our financial knowledge and so we're not, we're not, we don't want to see him leave, but after, he says after 24, 25 years, it's time. And ma'am?
Madam Mayor, if I might, I want to clarify that 600 days, just so I can make sure that it's not just 600 days. We have water coming down the river, nearly 4 CFS. The city is taking about one and a half, was taking about one and a half CFS off the river, so it's coming off the river in conjunction with what we have in storage will give us the 600 days.
600 days.
And we do expect to continue to, we usually stay, we don't usually get any lower than the one, one and a half that we're taking off the river right now. And I did want to say that the month leading up to April 1st, the city voluntarily stayed off the river for for about 29 days in communicate, we worked with the city's, and I'm speaking with Richard Cousins, we wanted to give the city's a chance to wet the fields and prepare them for the agricultural season. So the city completely stayed off the river for the month of March and in April, we started the plantation schedule and we've actually stayed at the minimum. We haven't been taking off of any water off the river that we're allowed to take. We've been taking much less than that. Very soon, we're going to have to start taking what we're authorized to take, but we've been making a concerted effort to take only what we have to.
The lastly, I think you've all had, you all have access to the progress reports and if not, please let me know and I'll provide copies. These are the, these are some of the many projects that each and every one of the departments has, but I I thought that it'd be best that we just report on some of the issues that maybe someone had questions on or some questions that can be answered and and if you have any questions on any of the items that I provided, by all means, please let me know.
I have a couple of questions. On the Moody report, what is the actual threshold rate for the city of Las Vegas? Let's give it a ratio.
A, A2. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
So a little higher than?
Yes, a little bit higher.
Okay, under the extension, is the city going to meet the 45-day requirement for the actual report?
Yes, we plan to have it invite, well, the, the budget is due on June 1st at DFA. The charter, I believe, says that we must have something to mayor and council within a 45-day period and so we're looking, we are, we will meet that deadline.
We will?
Yes.
So we won't need an extension?
No.
Very good.
I'm not looking, I'm not looking at that. I think if we can meet on the first week in May, and that's just the interim budget, so we'll just develop the interim budget, see what other, because we'll have to look, wait for cash balances and other things of that sort. The unions are still negotiating, so we'll still have to finalize that sometime and hopefully in July, they have finalized their union contracts and we'll know more of what happens with with them. Our cash balances have been healthy. We're looking at, we're not looking at a lot of money, but at least we're in a healthy position right now.
And will we monitor the transfer in, transfers out?
Yes.
Make sure we can close out the business?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the show's on.
All right. The next item, oh, the next item on the agenda is the financial report, Tom Vega.
I'd like to present the revenues and expenditures for the month of March. 75% of our budget year has elapsed. General fund, total revenues, $8,588,190. Total expenditures, $7,703,985 for a net increase of $967,000 in our cash balance. Recreation center, total revenues of $445,836. Total expenditures, $433,775 for a net increase in cash of $12,000.
The promise, excuse me, that's only the 112%?
Pardon?
We've met the 112%?
Yes.
Thank you.
The enterprises wastewater, which is recorded on the April basis for revenues, $2258,858. Natural, natural gas, $3,571,555 is just under the 75%. So the last couple of months have been kind of cold, so we saw that increase in revenue. Solid waste, $2,567,762. That's right at the 75%. Expenditures, which are recorded on the cash basis, $2,237,865 for wastewater. Natural gas, $3,416,666. Solid waste, $2,501,229. And water at $3,851,801. Can we entertain any questions?
Those two comments and Counselor Casey.
Thank you. Mrs. Vega, on the general fund revenue comparison?
Yes.
Just a quick question on the license and fees. That's really up, you know, it's at 134%. Is that due to all the construction permits for all the roofs that have been fixed all over town?
Yes, and the, and the vehicles.
Okay, root, okay. And then I was looking at the expenditure comparison on that same page and we have parks, library and museum with really low amounts in available balances. We have parks at $87,000, library at $89,000 and the museum at $59,000. That money, is it enough to finish out the fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am. Parks, if you'll note over on the extreme right, only 70% of their budget has been used and normally it should be at 75.
Okay.
Okay. And then which other one, library?
So library's at 56, so that's okay.
Yes.
And museum at 64.
Yes.
Okay. Then on the recreation department?
Yes.
Last year, I had, I don't know how many phone calls, like constant, because of the Yapple program that was not implemented and people were very, very upset about that. Are we going to be able to do that for next year?
That's the young, that's a football program.
Yeah, so Yapple and the Apple and parents love that. And last year, they had to take their kids to Santa Fe, which really created a hardship for them. And so I just want to make sure that when we put the budget together, that we have money for for those programs for the kids.
I believe and I'll check, Madam Mayor, Counselor, I will check, but I believe that there was a, there wasn't enough teams to go around, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll double check that and then I'll see what the plans are and how maybe we can advertise and do a little bit more.
That's what I understood last year, however, from the information that I got from parents, there were 15 teams that were formed from kids that were going to Santa Fe from Las Vegas. And so that's, I mean, if there weren't enough to go around, I was shocked when people told me that they had 15 teams made up of kids from Las Vegas. So I would like to see that stay here where we can serve our own, our own kids.
If we can serve them and if it's the, within the same age group, of course, we would, we would love to see the same thing as well. And so let me check, I will check on that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay, if you have any other questions, call me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Vega?
Yes.
Good report.
Thank you.
I have a question. In regards to the DBIB industrial park, there are certain GRT monies set aside for improvements specifically for the DBIB industrial park. Am I saying this correct?
There isn't, I don't believe that there's dedicated GRT, but there is funds available for the DBIB industrial park, if I'm not mistaken.
Within the fund itself, there was some cash that is dedicated solely for the park.
Yes.
Okay, so how much is that?
I think we were at 400?
Approximately 400,000 that was there.
And we still have that?
Yes.
Okay. Is it being planned for use of it?
There, we, we didn't have, I didn't have any, I haven't received any type of plans for it or any type of request other than there was, there was a property that needed repair of some sort because of the drainage and I don't remember the property that was, I don't remember the, the name of the property, but I can get that for you and see what we needed to do because I do believe that there is a contractor that is currently working on a plan for drainage. Am I correct?
Yes.
So was it, was the fund higher than 400,000 at one time?
No.
Because I, I thought it was around 750.
The monies, monies that flowed into that fund were from the sale of the lots and this is projects that been going, ongoing project, what, 20, 30 years?
Yes.
So there was some development, there had to be some roads put in and then utilities were also put in to make them accessible to the developers.
Okay, so 400,000?
It's approximately 400 and we have, we have pooled out 50,000 in order to work on the plans for drainage, I believe, and site improvements over there. We have a, we have a engineer working on those. Then we'll bring it back to mayor and council and see how we proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Tom.
She scares me. She scared me. Is a consent agenda, and I will refer that over to the city clerk. You approve of the first item on the agenda on the consent agenda, the only item, I guess, is item number one.
Yes, consent agenda consists of item number one, approval of resolution 1817 authorizing the lease of a small parcel property located in the area of the Herald of Dukes Fire Station by American Tower.
Thank you very much. What is the board's vote? Questions, comments?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Casey?
I move approval of resolution number 18 dash 17 to authorize the lease of a smart, the parcel of property behind the Herald of Dukes Fire Station by American Tower.
Your answer?
Second.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Uliwati Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next item is the business items. Number one, item number one is to conduct a public hearing and approval, disapproval to adopt ordinance number 18 dash 02 amending lodgers tax increase from 4% to 5%.
I make a motion to go into public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into public hearing.
Your answer?
Second.
Counselor Uliwati Jr.
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Will you defer anybody else?
Those who wish to speak on this issue, would you please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me?
Aye.
Aye.
State your name for the record.
Joaquin Garofalo.
Swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
On my testimony to counsel today.
On my testimony to counsel today.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Have a rip.
Continue.
So today, I have Joaquin here today with us. He's the chair of the lodgers tax board so that we could present the approval or disapproval of ordinance of 18 dash 02 amending the lodgers tax from the 4% to 5% increase, which is the 1% increase that is, we're looking to do solely for infrastructure, which is tourist related.
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Maruho, Ms. Garofalo, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, good. I know we had a publication of the last council meeting, and did you receive any feedback from lodgers in regards to this increase?
Yes, we did. As a matter of fact, we already have a few of the owners of some of these hotels, motels and such, that have called and already asked us when they can start putting the 1% increase in their taxes because they support, they really do support the increase. They believe it's not only going to help with the infrastructure, but with economic development and, you know, being able to fix these things and then bring people in.
Do you, does the lodgers tax board have a plan on, already in place, what we're going to use it for?
We currently have a requested or recommended to city and to the governor in body to move forward on a wayfinding system for the city of Las Vegas. We would like to see it funded, plans for construction as well as implementation and the way we really, we're not quite sure until we get bids in or where the prices are, but perhaps see it in three phases or multiple phases. The first plan, of course, being two construction plans so that we have a full outline and we can move forward and then we'll start with city center and then definitely look at the two additional off-ramps off the interstate and expand into Hot Springs and throughout New Mexico Avenue so that it's a real full perception of the city with signage anywhere possible, including our friends from the River Walk, being able to identify such things as the River Walk in the direction for that.
So you'll be working with Ms. Lutz and them?
Yes.
Yeah, they did do a presentation with us during our last meeting.
Good.
And that's for this year and as we move forward, we're working on creating a budget and and coming up with our next infrastructure recommendation for the city.
And then, of course, on that 1% increase, that funding just depends, you know, as the projects come along and they start getting presented, which ones and how much we'll be able to set aside and help participate in, in those projects. So it just, it's one of those, we'll have the money available to be able to complete those projects as they come along, but it just depends on which ones, is they, each fiscal year comes.
Higher prioritization and needs for the city as a whole. And this kind of corresponds with the next fiscal year, which is really nice timing for budgeting in the future year on how to spend those expenditures.
I thought the wayfinding signage was going to be funded through the monies left over from Cisneros?
Well...
Is that wrong? Am I saying that wrong?
When, when the fiscal year is complete and we see what budget, what monies are carried over into the budget, now as of this point, yes, the monies that were left over or monies in the current infrastructure area, as we recommended to council several months ago, 20% of the budget being used in infrastructure, those monies from Cisneros just filtered back into the percentages and we should have enough money currently to at least get plans developed and perhaps start the first phase, in which case this 1% increase over the course of the next 14 months could possibly complete the project of wayfinding in all three phases, depending on what the increase or what our increase in revenue was in heads and beds over the course of the next year.
Yeah, we've already started as staff looking into the process where, so we could, as they made their recommendations to staff and we've been looking into starting that RFP process to get that wayfinding, the construction implementation part started since we already have had in the past all the... have had in the past all the plans for the wayfinding. So now we're moving on to the, to the next process.
Which is very exciting to actually get to the point of implementation after discussion for multiple years.
What about the distribution of funds to the nonprofits? What's the status on that?
That one, so what we've been doing with, since we all kind of came in around the same time, is we've been taking presentations from the nonprofits. And then, as they present, of course, the board's been making the recommendations on what the amount should be to help them with their marketing status. However, after, starting this new fiscal year, in which we'll be putting out here very shortly, we're going to be going back to the process that was set before, which, where they, we put an RFP out, they apply for the marketing funds, and then we put a committee together to score them, to see who would be needing those spendings for the marketing.
And that'll also be based on the percentage allocations that we make, or that we recommend to Madam Mayor and the governing body to approve. When those percentages have been approved, we're going to break you down into two cycles this year for the purpose of nonprofit and do them in six-month increments. One of our objectives is to be proactive about recommending a budget prior to the budget month, so that we can at least, you guys can have your opportunity to do due diligence when creating a city budget, and also being able to be proactive for the nonprofits, for the people who are subject to events in the first half of the fiscal year versus the second half of the fiscal year. So we'll break it into a May presentations as well, December presentations, so that nonprofits both have adequate amount of time to prepare for their events.
And how will you be distributing that information to the nonprofits?
Hey?
Well, I've been meeting with the nonprofits lately and having the discussions as they ask and they come up. But the, the way we're going to approach it is we are going to put it out there, we'll be doing, you know, PSAs, and we'll be publishing in the paper and such, so that these nonprofits are aware. We'll also send a letter out, as we did in prior years, letting the nonprofits know that this is going to be a process, and when the deadlines will be that they need to meet in order to get those applications in for either the first six months or the second six months.
Okay. Good. And when is your next Lodger's Tax meeting?
I believe that we, we have tentatively sent it, set it for the end of May, and the purpose of the end of the May is so that the middle of May, we could make a recommendation to the Council as far as our budget goes. When the, when the, when the governing body makes a decision on budget allocations or approves recommendations, we will then be in a position to allocate monies effective July 1 for the purpose of 4th of July Motorcycle Rally. I know they have the Casa de la Nueva under the stars and multiple events that occur throughout the summer, the CCHB, Casa de Cultura, any of those different kinds of nonprofits that are looking to be funded in the early part of the summer, we'll be in a position to prioritize immediately. And objectively, the board, the Lodger's Tax Board is just looking to be a step ahead and not play the catch-up game. How can we represent the city as best as requested upon us, as well as put forth the effort needed for the nonprofits to be successful in their endeavors?
Yeah, typically, the Lodger's Tax meets quarterly, so the next one wouldn't be till July. But Lodger's Tax is trying to move forward and, and start getting on a regular path. So they've been having special meetings just about every month, so that we can get...
The reason why I asked that question, because there's rumors out there that you're going to have a meeting on the 19th of this month?
Uh, no.
Just tomorrow?
No. Okay.
That's, I just wanted to squelch that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I, I know that we're excited for your plan on, on the use of that 1%, because this community can really use some good planning in that regard.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I need a motion to accept the record proper. On the Justice Board?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the record proper.
Your answer.
Your call. I'm sorry, a second. Counsel Romero?
Yes.
And I apologize, Counsel, I'm a little tired, so.
I'm going like this later, from yesterday. Not hearing too well.
We'll set up another election.
Have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel Romero. Madam Mayor, motion carries. Counsel Howell?
Yes.
Counsel LeVadi Jr.
Yes.
Counsel Romero?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
I need a motion to close public hearing and reconvene into regular session.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and that we move into regular session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Your call.
Counsel Casey?
Yes.
Counsel Romero?
Yes.
Counsel Howell?
Yes.
Counsel LeVadi Jr.
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel Romero and Counsel Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
We are in regular session, but it's a pleasure, Counsel.
Madam Mayor?
Counsel Howell?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance 18-02, amending lodger's tax increase from 4% to 5%.
Your call.
Counsel Romero?
Yes.
Counsel Casey?
Yes.
Counsel Howell?
Yes.
Counsel LeVadi Jr.
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Howell, a second by Counsel Casey and Counsel LeVadi Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for all your hard work. Madam Mayor, members of the Council, item number two on business items is to conduct a public hearing and approve or disapprove of the application requesting a restaurant beer and wine license with an on-premise consumption only with patio service submitted by Fifth Grade Enterprises LLC, DBA B3-BQ Burgers and Beer, located at 131 Bridge Street, Las Vegas, New Mexico, application number 1081092.
I need a motion to go into public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Your call.
Counsel Romero?
Yes.
Counsel LeVadi Jr.
Yes.
Counsel Howell?
Yes.
Counsel Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Please just wait. Justice Board?
Madam Mayor, Counsel?
Those who wish to speak on this issue, please stand and raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name for the record.
Joaquin Garfalo.
Swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
During my testimony to counsel tonight.
During my testimony to counsel tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Again.
Madam Mayor, if I may just introduce the items?
Absolutely.
So this item, just for information, was brought, the exact same item, was brought to Mayor and Council back in January of 2017, and it was for the same exact alcohol and gaming, sent that out for requesting an application for restaurant beer and wine license with on-premise consumption only with patio service. And that was presented by the Fifth Grade Enterprises LLC, doing business as B3. And I believe this evening, Joaquin Garfalo will go ahead and explain why it is being brought back to the Council, because it was approved at that time. I believe there was some change in the ownership.
Correct.
Go ahead and tell me.
And by state stature, the law states that anytime there's an exchange of ownership of 9% or more, the license needs to be reissued for the purpose of ownership. And that's the, the purpose today. And in particular, our operating partners at the restaurant, Brian McGill, who is busy operating tonight, which is good, has decided to purchase a percentage of the, of the LLC that holds the license and the ownership of B3 Barbecue Burgers and Beer.
Okay, questions, comments? I have a question. On the issue of the patio service, I spoke to the City Manager about the law of adverse possession. What is the status of that?
That's on the permit application. That's, that's another step that is used. The first one is the approval of the, of the application, of the state application. The next one is the sidewalk sales permit application. That'll go, the, the next step will be for them to come in and fill the sidewalk sales permit application, and at that time, then we'll address the issue of the patio sales.
Thank you very much. We have no further questions. Any motion to accept the record proper?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the record proper. Do you have a second?
Second.
Your call.
Counsel Romero?
Yes.
Counsel Casey?
Yes.
Counsel Howell?
Yes.
Counsel LeVadi Jr.
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
I need a motion to close public hearing and reconvene into regular session.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and reconvene into regular session.
Your answer.
Second.
Counsel Howell?
Yes.
Counsel LeVadi Jr.
Yes.
Counsel Casey?
Yes.
Counsel Romero?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel LeVadi Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
We are in regular session. Please, it's a pleasure.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the application requesting a restaurant and beer wine license on the premise, on-premise consumption only for Fifth Grade Enterprises, doing business as B3 Barbecue or BQ Burgers and Beer on Bridge Street.
Only with patio services, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Your call.
Counsel Howell?
Yes.
Counsel Romero?
Yes.
Counsel Casey?
Yes.
Counsel LeVadi Jr.
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel Romero. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The third item on the business item agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the Council, is the approval, disapproval to award RFP 2018-21 for the 2018, 2019, 2020 annual audit services and entry into contract with Acxiom CPAs and Business Advisors LLC. And we have Ms. Vega to present.
The City of Las Vegas requested our proposals for the years, fiscal years, 2018, 2019, and 2020 audit, and the scoring, the...
Oh, do you need the score? Did you need the score?
I don't know. You should have available in front of you the scoring.
Did you have it?
And there were, we received six proposals, and these were the three highest that we scored. And with Acxiom coming out as the top proposal, our choice. So I would like to request an approval of, to award the bid to, the proposal to Acxiom.
Questions, comments?
Just have a quick question, Madam Mayor. In the, whatever I read somewhere in that big, huge packet, you stated that Acxiom has done work for the city before. How long ago was that?
I don't believe they have...
Not while...
Not while any of you have been here?
Not while any of us have been here.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you very much.
Continue. Any questions?
And actually, I believe that the, the price is a lot lower than what it has been. And so we felt that they had worked, they, they have a real, they have a real good, they had quite a few references, they had some good references, and then the price was widely in our range, possibly about, the value was 10, 15,000 lower. And so we were very happy, she was very happy with our results.
And who served on the ranking and rating?
Um, myself, Helen Be Hill, and Kenny Groh.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Your call.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the RFP for 2018 through 2021 for annual audit service to contract with the city with Acxiom CPAs and Business Advisors LLC.
I believe, I'm sorry, it would be 2018, yes, sir, 2018, 2019, and 2020.
20, I'm sorry, yeah.
Not 2020, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, you got that corrected?
Second.
Your call.
Counsel Howell?
Yes.
Counsel LeVadi Jr.
Yes.
Counsel Casey?
Yes.
Counsel Romero?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Casey, a second by Counsel LeVadi Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Next is Counsel's report. Thank you, Tom.
Next is the Counsel's report.
Okay, Counsel, uh, let me...
Okay. To Mayor, to Council, and City employees, community, I, I have been privileged and honored to service you for eight years. But I made decision for betterment of the city, and God directs my son, David Romero. Las Vegas, thank you for any and all things that I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Casey?
Thank you. I just have three items that I want to discuss. The first one is, a long time ago, probably about a year ago, I requested that my address that is on the City website be changed to my personal home address, instead of having the 1700 North Grand on there. I prefer to get my mail at home, simply because I only, I don't come to City Hall to check my mail every day. And so I've missed a couple of invitations to things that I really wanted to go to, and even though they were happening, because my mail was here. So I would really appreciate that that could be done.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the next item is, this is an ongoing problem on Railroad Avenue, the 700 block. The residents there have called me to express their extreme concern about the employees from the recycling business across the street from their homes, parking in, in front of their homes, and they don't really mind that so much, but every time that the trash is supposed to be picked up, people move their trash bins or park right next to them, and they've done everything that Solid Waste has asked them to do. They've moved the trash bin to the middle of the street, they put it on the side, you know. And people that come to the recycling business move the trash bins and then park next to it, and the trash has not been picked up because of that. And so I just had a long discussion with them, and they would really like to have no parking signs put up in front of the houses on the 700 block, so that people do not park there, so that they can at least get their trash picked up on a regular basis. And it's not the fault of, of the Solid Waste Department, it is the fault of the people that come to that business and park where they really shouldn't be parking. I mean, and if you see a trash bin out there, you know, everybody knows that it's trash day if the bin is out there in the street ready to be picked up, and people still park and move there, and move them around. So if we could do something to ameliorate that situation, I think they would really, really appreciate that. And my last comment is on Counsel Romero. I'm going to miss him. Counsel Romero has been a wonderful colleague. He has been a mentor to me. He knows a lot of background and history on the Council. He's been here for a long time, and he has a lot of knowledge, and he has always been open and willing to share it with me, and I appreciate that greatly. And I appreciate him very much, and I think that we should be happy that we were able to have him for eight years. And I think that, you know, we're going to miss him, I'll still go bug you though. And we'll have his son here, so we are not going to lose total contact with him, but it has been my honor and my pleasure to work with Counsel Romero, and I am very fortunate fortunate in being able to work with him all these years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Howell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to ditto what, uh, Council Casey said about, uh, Council Romero. It's been a pleasure, uh, working with you and serving with you for the city, and I know you, you really have the passion to help out our city, and, uh, I really appreciate that and thank you so much for that, and I'm looking forward to, uh, the next generation of the Davids. With two Davids.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I have, that was just my comment. All right. I really want us to commit to ourselves about the baseball fields. I attended both the, um, East Side opening ceremonies and West, West Side, uh, opening ceremonies for the Little Leagues, and observing the fields, they looked really dry, very dusty, and, uh, especially during the East opening ceremonies, the wind was just, uh, crazy, and, uh, a lot of dust was flowing everywhere, so we really need to, uh, uh, commit to ourselves to, to really get that watering done, um, and I'm hoping that the district judges or whenever, whoever it is that come and looks at our fields, that they will pass us because we did such a great job in, uh, keeping up the fields, and that's June is coming right around the corner, so. I need to ask questions about, uh, an MOU, an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, and this is, um, was informed to me by a, a collaborative called MSG, which is the Mora San Miguel Guadalupe Collaborative, in regards to, uh, addressing the opioid, uh, situation, and I understand that the MOU was submitted to the city, uh, a while back, uh, and also to the county. The county has signed it, but the city has not, so I'm wondering, uh, what's the reason for that?
The, um, as a matter of fact, we spoke about it this morning, that's, there, some of the items are still up in, uh, we're still trying to work out the, the plan, the plan of action, am I correct? And so that's where it has, the county has assigned it, and they, I believe that they did a, did they do a resolution?
I believe so.
I believe they did, uh, but at this point, uh, I believe we're still in the planning stages, am I correct? And I'll, I'll defer that question over to.
Yes, um, we're, uh, we're out in the planning stages, uh, for the NP ship facility, um, but as far as MOU goes, I know I was, uh, not here to our prior attorney, which, um, you know, I'm not too sure where I went from there, right now it is, uh, submitted to, uh, Ms. Smith for review, so hopefully we can have something here pretty quickly.
So we are working on it, then?
Yes, absolutely. Just that we need to tread carefully, this is an area that we're not too familiar with, and so we're moving possibly a little bit slower.
Right.
But I know that, um, we do have the attorney on it, the previous attorney had, uh, reviewed it, I don't know, uh, what the circumstances or the issues were, if she had any, however, we, we're forwarding it over to, uh, to Dan's.
As we heard from Dr. Tafoya, uh, the impact that, uh, this, uh, disease has, the opioid situation that we have in our community.
It's critical.
So we really to, need to place focus on it and, uh, and really be, uh, part of the collaboration and to, to address the situation for our, of our citizens here, so.
And we'll work on it as quickly as we can.
Also, Altavista is, uh, going to be working on having a, uh, which one is it, there, uh, is, is it a?
Detox.
Detox, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, a lot of the, uh, entities within this, uh, community is really working hard on, on trying to, uh, address this situation.
Yes.
So I hope that we become a really major part of this, too, so. Good. Um, okay, down the list, AWC, I know you spoke to about it, um, the, it was part of their contract was to have a meeting, and I mentioned that, uh, in the past, to where the council and the public and the AWCs is, uh, having a conversation on, uh, what the concerns are and, and the resolutions are.
Yes.
Are we still planning that, or?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Not having to have it, or?
No, as a matter of fact, uh, we did speak to, uh, I did speak to Mr. Cool, he'll be out of town for a few days.
Okay.
But, uh, we'll set up a meeting, we'll get, uh, the secretary to set up a meeting, and then we'll see what some of the issues are, prepare an agenda, and then forward it over to you, and see how we best, uh, do that with, uh, public as well as Mayor and Council.
Okay. And, uh, we haven't, uh, give, set a date or anything?
No, we have not, he is, he is, uh, what he did tell me was that he would be out of town for, uh, a week, a week and a half, but that he would be back and contact us.
Okay.
I'd also like to speak to him regarding his, and we did have a little bit of a dialogue regarding, um, his budget and some of the issues that they have over there, and so we need to sit down with him as well, and maybe it's a good opportunity for us to all meet and have those discussions, open discussions as well.
Right, I think that would be good.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I know there's hopes and dreams within our community, and, and the Weather Channel said that it's going to be, uh, at least an inch of rain tomorrow. So let's hope, uh, that it's going to be true.
Really? I didn't hear that.
And in regards to the rains coming, uh, the concern again is we need to see what we can do for preventive, uh, preemptive action, uh, in certain areas, and I know, uh, we were supposed to get, uh, in contact with, uh.
You'll be, you'll be getting a call, um, I know he was, um, actually, he was someone, he, uh, branch fell in his, uh, on his vehicle, and he didn't have any injuries, but, a little scary, but, um.
This is Kristen?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
But, uh, I did, I did remind him, and so you both will be getting calls, on the erosion issues that we had, we did discuss them, and, uh, I thought it best that, uh, you ride with him and you show him some of the issues that, um, that we have, uh, both, both you as far as potholes and things of that sort, maybe need to be addressed.
And the areas that I had mentioned before is the, um, the Vita and Cantada area. Uh, also, um, Maestis, uh, Jose Maestis is Cinder Road area.
Yes.
That's where you and I are supposed to go look at. Also, um, the Prince Street, Prince Street is a major flooding area when the rains come, and all the water goes into the, uh, the people's homes and things like that.
I reminded him, um, so he'll be contacting you.
Okay, and Dr. Court's, uh, area, this block.
Okay.
The next area is Keen Street, now here's the rumor that's out there, and we need to squelch this, that the Keen Street is supposed to be fixed, the road is supposed to be fixed, or paved or something like that, right? Uh, but the city had used that money for something else, and so therefore, uh, Keen Street's not going to be, uh, repaired. What's the status?
I don't believe that that was, uh, the issue, I believe Keen Street is being looked at by DOT, they're the ones who are conducting the surveys and are conducting some of the, uh, other issues that need to be done prior to it, it would be, uh, DOT, uh, a DOT, uh, project, but I don't recall that we ever used any kind of funding for Keen Street, I can, um, what we can do is research to see if anything was done with Keen Street, but I don't believe so.
No, nothing was directed for a project.
And I don't remember even from previous years that we budgeted anything for Keen Street.
I know, I know we talked about Keen Street.
We did. We have talked about it.
Some agree, but there was some concerns.
Okay.
But I'll be glad to, we'll be glad to do the research.
Why is DOT involved with Keen Street, is that a city street?
My understanding was that DOT was going to be involved with, uh, the Keen Street and some other, one other street that was crossing over, and they were doing surveys, and I can get a little bit more information for you and, and, uh, pass it on to you, but I, when I did check on it, it was, uh, DOT was being, that was going to be, uh, doing that project.
Okay. I'm a scary guy.
He's so scary.
I wrote the story on this, actually.
Oh, did you? All right, maybe.
When we got the grant. The Keen Street is part of the DOT grant for the, uh, pouring of sidewalks, ADA compliance, and repaving that's going all the way up grants, uh, close to Council Uliberi's place, and, uh, that's, that's where the funding is coming from, and that's what's going to, uh, get or done is the DOT, it's not, it's not the city's dime unless there's a matching. I see.
Then there may be a matching that we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to scare you. Then there may be a matching, or there may be some type of grant funding that we would gladly take a look at, but I know that the DOT was looking at, so, and, and as soon as we can get the project on place, but I believe that it was Mr. Romero that asked about this as well, and so, um, I did look into it, and that was approximately a year to a year and a half away of what I know, and it did come out on the object, I, I believe, because I did pull out the, uh, the publication, and I did read it through, and it was the DOT that was handing.
Thank you, and my, my last thing is, uh, congratulations to our, my counselor to the right, uh, Council Yolubry, uh, look, pleasure working with you in the next two years that I have left here, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
I just want to thank everybody for the good work that you guys do for the city. Mr. Romero, thank you for, yeah, staying here eight years, you did a good job. There was a lot of tough decisions that you made, you know, thank you for all the hard work, Romero, it's, it's a pleasure. We, we work, we need to work together as business people, and I commend you on everything you do, thank you for everything you've done for the city, and I just want to thank all my, all the people that came out and voted, thank you for the good, for all the voting that they did and, uh, came out on top, I'm here to, to bring this council together and this administration together, to hope and move this city forward, thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, congratulations, Council Romero, on everything, I wish you the best, you deserve it, and also congratulations, Council Libardi, and, um, I'm looking more to, um, executive session, do we have any?
I don't.
Madam Mayor, um, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, um, specifically for matters subject to attorney-client privilege pertaining to, uh, threaten or pending litigation in which, uh, the City of Las Vegas, uh, is or may become a participant as permitted by section, oh gosh, it's hard to see, yeah, ten dash fifteen dash one H.
Two.
Two of, uh, the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, NMS eight nineteen seventy-eight.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Council Romero?
Yes.
Council Casey?
Yes. Yes.
If you said yes.
Oh, Council Casey.
I'm gonna say no because I don't really know what we're doing here, we've not been informed.
Can I, do you want me to explain it?
Uh, you can't if it's going to be executive session discussion. Council, any other?
No.
Council Howell?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, we have a time?
No.
Motion does not carry.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Council Howell?
I, I really like to, I mean, it, it was in the newspapers.
Are you talking about the actual tort claims, and that has been discussed?
The lawsuit.
Yes, but that's something that, uh, I think should have been discussed prior to, and I believe that.
That's why I wanted to go into executive session.
I should have talked to myself and to possibly the city, uh, manager before, but we have a, we, we, we have a motion, we, we call for the question, you to vote.
I also want to make one more comment, I'd like to get a copy of the, um, the suit.
I think it's public record, correct?
I don't know that.
I mean, it was in the optics.
Well, yeah, but not the.
I don't know that pending litigation or any of those files are allowed, they're not allowed to be released, it's still pending, you know, litigation, uh, I mean, what we, what the paper released was, um, information that could be released, but the file itself intact would not be, uh, available.
Okay, continue.
Motion to adjourn, uh, Council Howell?
Yes.
Council Casey?
Yes.
Council Romero?
Yes.
Council Libardi Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Council Casey, a second by Council Libardi Jr., thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.